I'd like to call the meeting of the Village Board to order for August 28th, 2018. Could you please join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Penicola?
Here.
That's six.
At this time, we will move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, we have several. Oh, yes, we have several. Mr. Paul DeMichael?
I am Paul DeMichael. I live at seventeen W. two seventy-five Rodac Lane. This is the second round of petitions that we're bringing to the board. The petition question reads, "We, the underside, being business owners and customers of the Bensonville, do not want our Green Street and Center Street diagonal parking removed. The parallel parking, the accompanying loss of space would be catastrophic to our business." Sometimes the allure of grant money overrules common sense. One of the big attractions of our town, and if you go to the businesses, the availability of like right there parking. This is something that's become an attraction to people and has brought people into town. The issue was raised that this might be unsafe. That's really kind of a non-issue. The way to make it perfectly safe would be to just close off Center Street and not have any cars on it. That really would give the businesses a boost, right? So, we should be working to keep the successful businesses that we have viable and not make it harder for them to do business. The second thing is item eleven on the consent agenda, and every board member should realize you do have the choice of pulling off an item for discussion. Otherwise, this will slide right by and no one will talk about it. This is a transparent attempt to burn up the unincorporated water fund. Christopher Burke evidently does a study every two years. They do it over and over. They have a good working relationship with the village in that the village uses money from the unincorporated water fund to pay them. How many times do you want to do this is beyond me, but the... It always leads me to believe, you know, we have a public works department that should have been doing these studies themselves in-house, so it begs the question to me of what does Karachi do?
Mr. DeMichael, you're almost out of time. Thank you.
Okay, our second one, Gina Melanthan?
Hi. Gina Melanthan, I live in White Pines, Illinois. Just here, I was here last week and made a comment regarding the four forty that you guys are trying to spend on a survey again, and there has been an injunction set in place. I don't know if you received it yet, but I really would ask this board to please wait until there is a decision on which way we want to go. We are in negotiations with the county and we are in negotiations with Illinois American Water. If we choose to go to Bensonville, then that would be fine, but right now, we're in negotiations with two other people too. I ask you to wait. Don't spend the money until we're certain which way we're going to go. Thank you.
The third person is Gary Gardner.
Hello, my name is Gary Gardner. I live in White Pines. It's hard to believe that the Village of Bensonville finds it necessary to spend over four hundred thousand dollars on yet another engineering study from Christopher Burke. In the technical memorandum that the White Pine Civic Association received dated March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, it would appear that much of what Mr. Karachi mentioned last Tuesday regarding the new study has already been done. Before any more money is spent from the unincorporated water fund, we need a thorough audit as well as the reimbursement of funds spent on pipes for servicing Maisel Court and the return of the one point seven million dollars that Gina successfully lobbied for, only to see Mayor Guiles spend it elsewhere. This fund has been pilfered for the last thirty years. We need to figure out just how much there should be in it, and the village would like to dissolve it before we can. These last two annexation threats are decimating the White Pines community. Dozens of homes have sold since the last threat that started in November of two thousand fourteen, and many more people are talking about moving or will be forced out financially. The scope of your proposed upgrade seems unclear. The last map that I've seen shows a new eight-inch main on Third, yet still shows a dead end on eighty-three. Mr. President, you told me last winter that the pipes would be replaced as necessary. Then a month ago, you told us the whole system. Then last Tuesday night, you said you wouldn't be replacing all the pipes. And are we now calling this an SSA? Clearly, the whole thing has not been thought through nearly enough. The only thing you seem certain about is that the Village of Bensonville must capture White Pine subdivision no matter what it takes or who it drives out. Mr. President, I don't appreciate you and your village manager going door-to-door or inviting blocks of residents to come and listen to your propaganda. Those of us that have lived here for decades still have a bad taste in our mouth from past administrations, and your latest antics have dispelled any hope that many of us may have had that you would somehow be different. The fact remains, if Village of Bensonville had not reneged on the program set up by Mayor Guiles in nineteen eighty-seven, our entire system would have been replaced around the year two thousand. Mr. President, somehow you have persuaded five White Pines residents to support your proposal before they even saw it or helped you craft it. Nearly every day, a couple hundred...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Nearly every day, a couple hundred White Pines residents receive skewed numbers and blatant misinformation to try to swing them over to the Benson... Village of Bensonville. I find this action absolutely despicable. Thank you.
The next person up is Doug Levine.
Doug Levine, White Pines. I'm a little bit under the weather tonight, but I did want to make this important meeting. One thing I'd like to address to the board, if you would consider a seven o'clock board meeting start time, so it allows other residents to get home from work and be at these important meetings. Six-thirty is just a little bit too tight for many, many residents to come here. I'm here addressing the resolution that you guys want to pass tonight and vote on. That's the Burke engineering study. You know, remind you that in two thousand fifteen, we did this Burke study. We spent three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars on it. And is this study useless now? Is any of this study good? I ask that to you, board. I mean, that was a lot of money put out. All right, so now here we are, two thousand eighteen. We're going to spend more than that, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, to be exact. What could change in the last two and a half years? The ground doesn't change. Pipes are still where they were. What changes? The price, the cost of pipes? Is that easy to mark up, two percent, one percent? Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, study again? I got to tell you guys, you know, we're trying to represent our community. We've been voted in, just like you have been voted in. The people voted for us to represent them. We're trying to do the best we can. Five members walked off that board and started nothing but chaos, and you guys have sat down and had Kool-Aid with them. Are you working against us, or do you want to work with us? Now you want drones flying over our private properties? Please, really? Would you like drones flying over your private property? We're unincorporated, and we're that way, and we like it that way. And we don't need drones flying over our properties for your benefit. Now, you're also talking about taking this money out of the unincorporated, the Capital Unincorporated Fund. If I understood correctly, this was for capital improvements, pipes and so forth, not for a bunch of studies.
Thirty seconds.
We are currently, like Gary said here, we are currently in talks with DuPage County and Illinois American Water, and we need to finish those talks. And if you would just allow us, maybe, I think we just need a couple more months to wrap this up, we'll know where we're at. So I ask you guys, please postpone your vote tonight on this. Let us finish up what we're doing, and we'll get back to you. And let's talk, let's have some good dialogue and discussion with the right group that represents White Pines.
Mr. Levine, that's your time. Thank you.
And one more thing, if I may.
Mr. Levine, your time is up.
One more thing, if I may.
Your time is up.
Before wasting our money anymore, please, apply for your IEPA loan and wait till you get that.
Thank you, Mr. Levine, you're over time.
Okay? Get that first before you do anything else.
Mr. Levine, you're over time.
Thank you very much.
The next one up is Christopher Cologne?
My name is Christopher Cologne. I'm a White Pines resident. Thank you for recently posting responses to questions naturally as a resident. I'm going to review the responses to see if it answers my questions. I would like to raise another issue, and that is the American Water option. I believe the only sticking point is the ownership issue. Is the board willing to provide a third option to White Pines residents? I am sure some kind of tri-party agreement between Bensonville, DuPage County, and if so, if they want it, White Pines residents can come together and agree about who owns the water pipes, so they could proceed with the American Water option if the White Pines residents want this option.
Corey, can you go fix the lights? We'll fix that. The lights are difficult in here. Yeah, we'll credit you some time on that, Mr. Cologne.
Thank you, thank you, sir. American Water will not replace the entire water system, and they are offering a thousand dollars per household to White Pines residents. Give a real choice to the residents. They may choose annexation over the American Water. Let the residents decide. And I don't see anything wrong, it doesn't have to be litigated. It's an ownership issue. You all admit there's an ownership issue for decades. You agree you don't, if so decided, the White Pines residents own the, if they want this, they own the water pipes. The Village of Bensonville could say they don't own the water pipes. DuPage County could say they don't own the water pipes. They put this in an agreement, they recorded against the land, there's no one else left. So that ownership issue to me is a red herring and can be resolved just by a simple agreement. It's up to you. Give the people the option and let them decide. They may go annexation. Then it's over. It's annexed, great. But if they go American Water, and I'm not advocating American Water, let people decide, give them the choices. Right now, the choice is annex or triple your water rate. That's not a real choice.
Thank you.
That was all I had.
This will conclude public comment. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen Village Board meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Is there a second? Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of six hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars, sixty-three dollars and forty cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. At this time, I would ask a member of the board to make a motion to deviate from the agenda in order for the village manager to present the resolution authorizing the retention of Edelson PCS special legal counsel in connection with litigation related to the opioid crisis.
You have a motion?
Is there a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries, Mr. Summers, go ahead and...
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have a resolution, and our special counsel is here, Alfred Murray from Edelson, to bring the, if you want to take the, yeah, we can circulate this. To pursue a lawsuit for the opioid epidemic against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids within our community and beyond. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Murray, so he can discuss how we got here and what the plan is and what we can expect.
Thank you, Village Manager Summers, and President DeSimone, and the board. It's an honor and privilege to be here tonight to discuss the opioid litigation, what my firm, Edelson PC, has already done, and what we're proposing to do for the Village of Bensonville. Before I talk about the opioid crisis and our approach, let me just briefly introduce my law firm. Edelson PC is a nationally recognized plaintiff's class action and mass action law firm. We've taken on some of the largest companies in the country, Vioxx, JP Morgan, Microsoft, Google, and Facebook. Just recently, this past spring, on behalf of the Cook County State's Attorney's Office and the people of the state of Illinois, we sued Facebook and Cambridge Analytica related to the two thousand sixteen presidential data mining operation, and that case is still pending. Just in late May, we filed a lawsuit, our first lawsuit, against opioid manufacturers and distributors and prescribers on behalf of eleven municipalities, including a few Bensonville neighbors, Melrose Park, North Lake as well. And then in late July, we filed a second lawsuit against the same defendants on behalf of an additional fourteen municipalities. So we currently represent twenty-five Illinois municipalities, which is what brings me here tonight. We are preparing and intending on filing what would be our third lawsuit, and I've passed out a few materials, and my apologies for not having enough of the PowerPoint presentation to go around, but I'll walk just briefly through that and touch on a few highlights. As for the opioid crisis, it's well documented now that prescription painkillers have had, presently have, and likely will continue to have a devastating impact on all of our communities. We're at the point now where Americans die from an opioid overdose every sixteen minutes, sixteen minutes, according to the CDC. In addition to the pain caused to individuals and families affected by the epidemic, communities have shouldered real costs related to combating this crisis, being first responders, and being out there on the front lines of members of the community having to deal with this crisis. When we talk to communities, they often don't realize the total amount of costs that they're incurring and attribute, the increased expenditures to general expenses such as rising healthcare costs, increased costs of law enforcement, what have you. But there are three key areas where communities are incurring significant costs related to the opioid crisis. One is in lost work productivity, and these costs include everything from rehiring costs, employee absenteeism, both of an individual's being treated themselves, as well as if a family member is dealing with the crisis, and other economic impacts. Admittedly, those are a bit hard to quantify. What we have in other areas, such as healthcare and medical services, are communities that are self-insured in any capacity. Those costs related to the opioid epidemic include paying for employees and their families for the actual prescriptions, opioid prescriptions, and costs associated with treatment, whether it be recovery and outpatient treatment, as well as increased insurance premiums. Similarly, we have criminal justice costs, and those are increased expenses related to courts, law enforcement, corrections personnel, as well as in many cases, first responders who have to be armed, first trained, and then secondly, armed with the antidote, which in some instances costs upwards of thousands of dollars. So turning the page in your materials, the Illinois Department of Human Services recently stated that the opioid crisis now claims more lives than homicides and car accidents combined. Across the country, municipalities and other entities have tried to clamp down on the opioid epidemic by filing hundreds of lawsuits against opioid manufacturers and distributors, seeking to hold them responsible for this epidemic. The general claims are that the manufacturers engaged in fraudulent and deceptive practices that cause excessive opioid prescription rates, the distributors engaged in conduct that led to vast amounts of opioid pills being diverted out of the supply and onto the street. Essentially, the manufacturers marketed opioids as being safe when they knew that they were not, and distributors knew that opioids were being over-prescribed, but neither group did anything about it to stop it. So the typical causes of action that you see are consumer protection statutes and public nuisance claims, as well as some insurance claims. We've taken a similar but different approach. We have filed in state court, and we have asserted Illinois consumer protection laws as well as some public nuisance laws. I'll get into that in a second. But we believe strongly that Bensonville should consider participating in this opioid litigation for two reasons. First, no community has been totally spared from the epidemic, and the impact will likely continue for many years. The cost to combat this crisis should be placed on the companies that created the problem and not on communities that were devastated by it. Additionally, to that point, we don't know exactly how much money it's going to take or resources it's going to take to combat this crisis for, again, the foreseeable future. And the second reason is history suggests that municipalities like Bensonville need to get involved. In the late nineties, with big tobacco litigation, a large settlement produced hundreds of billions of dollars for state governments. The assumption was that the money would eventually trickle down to municipalities, and despite local communities bearing a substantial amount of the tobacco-related burden, many municipalities were left out of those settlement dollars that continued to be funded to present. So, and that's largely because the municipalities didn't have their own cases on file, did not participate in the litigation, and did not participate in settlement discussions with the tobacco manufacturers. So we think it's crucial for villages like Bensonville to file their own lawsuits to avoid a similar result when ultimately, the opioid settlements are reached, and admittedly, we do believe that it's going to be via settlement. So here's our strategy that I referenced a moment ago. Of the hundreds of cases that are currently pending, in fact, actually, it's probably close to, if not over, a thousand at this point, many of them that were filed in state court have been removed to federal court, and many have been filed in federal court and transferred into a multi-district litigation, an MDL. The MDL is pending in Cleveland, Ohio. It is, we think, on a slow track to nowhere. There have been a few cases that have been identified as bellwether cases, as they call them. They're on a fast pace for discovery. They're going to be going to trial in two thousand nineteen, and all the other cases are unable to do anything, and they have to essentially wait for these bellwether cases to conclude before they can even participate in discovery, to get documents from the defendants, to get information from the defendants, to essentially prosecute their claims. We don't think that that is the right approach. What we have done in our prior two cases and what we intend to do in a third case that we, will be forthcoming, is filing in state court as opposed to the MDL. Few benefits of filing in Illinois state court. First and foremost, Illinois public nuisance and consumer fraud laws are favorable for these opioid claims. We think the state court provides a better forum for villages like Bensonville to carve out a piece of the overall national settlement. In other words, the defendants, when they eventually do get down to the time when they are going to settle these cases, it'll be a little bit more administrat... it'll be a little bit more administratively streamlined for them in the MDL, but they want to buy their piece. They're not going to leave the state court cases hanging out there. And we believe that, again, we already have twenty-five municipalities that have filed. We are going to be filing another case with some additional ones. We think that we have greater leverage, strength in numbers, as well as the shared resources. We have greater leverage in those settlement discussions by staying in state court. And as I'd mentioned, Edelson has already employed this strategy on behalf of a number of Illinois municipalities, including several Bensonville's neighbors. We think that filing these cases is one consolidated case, eventually consolidating all the cases into one. Again, provides greater leverage, is a better strategy to prosecute our claims. So let me talk a little bit about the retention agreement. The retention agreement, proposed retention agreement is included in the materials that were posted online, and I appreciate Mr. Montana working with me to get that before the board. The retention agreement that we are proposing is on a pure contingency basis. The, there would be certain costs that would be recouped by Edelson at the conclusion of the litigation, but in no instance will the costs exceed any recovery obtained by the village. We intend to ultimately, one of the questions we often get, how much time, personnel hours, resources do we anticipate? We understand that it's a concern of many villages and municipalities. We represent some as small as a few hundreds, some as large as tens of thousands. We are trying to streamline the process for discovery, for the questions and information that we need, and we think we have been successful in doing that already with our current clients, and we are certainly sensitive to those issues. A few of the other typical questions we get, how long before a resolution? That's the, no pun intended, million-dollar question. We, because the MDL will essentially be leading a lot of the settlement charge, we believe that it will take a couple years before we get down to discussing actual dollars. But again, with our intention of being, remaining in state court, we think that that is going to carve out substantially greater leverage and a better place at the table, so to speak, when we ultimately talk about dollars for our clients. Another question that we often get is if, does Bensonville need to have a serious or large problem in order to file? The answer is simply no. There are costs that have probably been incurred, but we don't know what costs may be incurred in the future. And again, this epidemic unfortunately is going to be going forward for quite some time. So again, it's our position, it's our submission, that the village should get involved now, carve out their stake, and at the end of the day, we will hopefully be able to, not hopefully be able to, we expect to be able to quantify what damages the village has incurred.
I'll just go on to that. This isn't just a legal fight that we're taking on with opioids. About six months ago, we, at the board's direction, called staff together, and we decided to do an all-hands-on-deck. Now, Bensonville's been largely insulated from some of the worst of the opioid epidemic, but we've hosted some webinars, we've gotten partnered with Fenton High School to educate parents on the risk of opioids. Our police have stepped up enforcement, working with Dumeag to prevent the traffickers of opioids. They're also equipped with Narcan to save lives. The next step, the next logical step, is pursue the legal route. So this is a, just one part of a multi-factor proposal that the village has been working through with staff. So I appreciate the board's support in all this. We determined that this is probably the most cost-effective way to pursue legal rather than an hourly rate, which is probably more typical, and it looks like Edelson is the law firm equipped to represent a lot of the communities that we associate with. So if the board has any questions, Mr. Murray will be happy to answer. Mr. Murray, do you have any?
Should we call the first and second first before we ask questions?
We absolutely should, sir.
This is a resolution authorizing the retention of Edelson PC as a special legal counsel in connection with litigation related to the opioid crisis. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion? There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Thank you, sir. Can you call the roll?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. That concludes the village manager's report.
Thank you.
We will now return to the regular order of business. Would the deputy village clerk please read the ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda that were discussed at the committee of the whole meeting?
Sure. Number one, an ordinance approving a variance shed size for Camille Matia located at seven fifty-one South Center Street. Number two, ordinance declaring Simbin Hockey Shop inventory and equipment as village-owned surplus property. Number three, a resolution authorizing a master license agreement with Universal Film Exchanges LLC. Number four, resolution authorized payment of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents to DuPage... to DuPage County for the first capital installment payment of the Police Records Management Systems component to the DuPage Justice Information System. Number five, ordinance approving an amended mutual aid agreement for Northern Illinois Police Alarm Systems. Number six, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Suburban Bus Division of the Regional Transportation Authority for participation in Ride DuPage program. Number seven, resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement with M. C. I. Metro Access Transmission Service Corporation doing business as the Regent Access to Transmission Service to install telecommunications within the Village of Bensonville right-of-way. Number eight, resolution approving the acquisition of necessary right-of-way permanent and/or temporary easements from Roll, uh, Roland Zabelowski of seven oh two West Green Street in a not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars related to the Church Road T. A. P. dash T. C. M. project. Number nine, resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service agreement with Bollinger Lack and Associates for the Church Road T. A. P. dash T. C. M. project in a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and one cent. Number ten, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Globe Construction, Inc. of Addison, Illinois for the two thousand and eighteen M. F. T. sidewalk removal and replacement program in a not-to-exceed amount of forty thousand dollars. Number eleven, resolution authorizing the execution of a design engineering service contract for the White Pines Water Main Replacement Project with Christopher B. Burke Engineering, L. T. D., in a not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Number twelve, resolution authorizing the execution of a design engineering service agreement for the two thousand and nineteen Village Water Main Improvements Project with James J. Benison Associates, Inc., in a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the twelve resolutions or ordinances listed on the consent agenda and read by the Deputy Clerk?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and items on the consent agendas are now approved. Moving on to Village reports, there are no reports for administration, community and economic development, finance. For the Police Department, we have to, uh, we have introduction of one of our new officers today, Anderson Davies. Please stand up, sir. Anderson, we swore you in last week, ten days ago? Two weeks ago? Chief?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, members of the community. I'm very pleased to introduce our newest officer with our department. Like all of our officers, it was a long hiring process that includes, uh, physical agility, a written test, a polygraph test, interview by our Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, and a, and a psychological test before you end up being hired by us. So it is a long process, and a lot of people don't make it, but we're lucky. Anderson Davies comes with us with nine years' experience with the Harvey Police Department, and, um, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westwood College. He's currently, he was, uh, sworn in on August sixth. So he's been three weeks now with our field training program, and he's doing an excellent job with that. Officer Kotluski is our officer that's doing the field training at this, this week. And, um, I'd like to point out that reflects well on our, our hiring of Officer Davies. We got other officers from other departments where he worked in the past, um, that have came to congratulate him and be here when he is being honored by the, by the village. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I forgot one important person to introduce. His mother, Mrs. Davies, is here that, in, uh, with one of his children. And I think his wife, she's in the back with another, with another one.
Congratulations to you guys, too.
So we're all proud and welcome to the family here.
Yeah, if we could, I'd like to get a picture with the Mayor and Board and your family, if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So did you really want to see him get on board, or make sure that he got? We, uh, we don't have, uh, any reports for Public Works or Recreation Department, so on the presidential remarks, um, first, I'd like to thank everyone for their public comments tonight. When I took office, I directed staff to come up with a plan that was fair and equitable for not only residents of White Pines, but also for the Village of Bensonville residents. This plan is, is designed to protect existing incorporated residents of the Village of Bensonville from having to subsidize the White Pines residents who chose to remain unincorporated, while allowing the unincorporated residents to make their own determination for their family's individual situation. I think it is important to note that there are a wide variety of opinions on the White Pines Water Main Replacement Project. I have walked the entire White Pines neighborhood delivering packets, and we've spent many nights meeting with individuals and groups of White Pines residents here at Village Hall to discuss the project and options. What was not reflected in this evening's public comments were the considerable number of White Pines residents who have expressed their desire to incorporate into the village and avoid the two hundred and seventy-five percent water rate increase. Some of those who spoke tonight have worked diligently for years to try and develop an alternative, but have come up empty-handed. I wanted to thank all of you for your tireless work in advocating for your neighbors. You truly have left no stone unturned. Some others, some others, however, appear to be pushing their own personal agendas at the expense of their neighbors. Fortunately, this plan is not predicated on if the project will move forward, but rather how each respective homeowner wishes to pay for the project. The choice is simple and varies from each household. Choose to annex and see their water sewer rates lowered to the village resident rate, or choose to remain unincorporated and pay a water rate which will increase to two hundred and seventy-five percent, the village, the village resident rate to cover their share of the water system upgrade. Just to let you guys know, we met with a lot of residents in White Pines. And we've told residents in White Pines that if it didn't work for them, don't incorporate. They've been told by us, if the plan did not work for them, do not incorporate. We told them. So there's nothing here to hide. And to be told that we shouldn't be walking White Pines, we met great people in White Pines. And we didn't come up with any pushback. And I don't think it was fair for those who showed up to the meeting and got their packets to not give them to the people who didn't or could not make the meeting. So that's why we walked White Pines. We could have mailed them, you're absolutely right, but we wanted to meet who we were there. I'm not gonna, listen, I'm not gonna debate with you, okay? I'm not gonna debate with you. As an update to the project status pre-annexation agreement, were placed in the mail yesterday and should be hitting White Pines mailboxes this week. Finally, to reiterate, anyone with questions on project is invited to schedule a meeting with the staff by calling Village Hall at six three zero, seven six six, eighty-two hundred. Final, final music in the park is tomorrow, Wednesday, and we are hosting the Shagadelics. We're also looking for our tree donation program. We are still looking for a family to donate their evergreen for the annual Holiday Magic event. The tree, if selected, will be removed free of charge. Zoning update, thanks to all the residents and businesses for attending Monday's open house to review the draft zoning update. We got a lot of great feedback, and we'll take that to C. Map for additional review. That concludes my presidential remarks. Do we have anything from the Village Manager?
We do not.
Do we have anything from the Village Attorney?
I do not, Mr. President.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board tonight?
Yes.
Is there any new business to come before the Board tonight?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.